I will now call back to order the regular meeting of the Lake Forest Community High School Board of Education meeting for February 10th, 2020. May I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Weinbrenner?
Here.
Mr. Mormon?
Here.
Ms. Davis?
Here.
Mr. Noble?
Here.
Ms. Zenzler?
Here.
Dr. Nemecus?
Here.
Mr. Lane?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Great, thank you. I am going to, we'll talk more about the resolutions during the resolutions, but for the sake of time, I'm going to skip the president's report and move right into the superintendent's report.
And I'm going to hand off to Dr. Holland to begin.
Sarah's not with us today, but we do have Bridgette, so she'll give us the student update.
Hello, I just have a few things to talk about today. So first off, our winter formal was two weekends ago, yes, and it was a big success. We had a higher participation rate than last year, so that was awesome. Also, as a senior class, we finalized our idea for the senior gift. We're just figuring out the pricing right now. And then also, as a student council, we try to do something every month called Student Council Appreciates where we single out a certain group, whether it's faculty or maybe even a group of students, and so we just want to show our appreciation towards them. So this month, we did the safety and security faculty, and we had this big poster that we gave them and we all signed it at our last student council meeting. And then we presented them with some smiley face cookies from Gearhearts, because everybody loves those. So that was great. And then this upcoming Thursday, we will be handing out little Valentine's Day candies to everybody. So that's about it.
So to get started, Alex Lamba and Elena Lee, two of our seniors, have been invited to become presidential scholars. Four thousand students received an invitation to apply, and the group has narrowed down to one hundred and sixty-one students across the country. We wish both of these students the best as they move forward with the process. Right now, we have auditions for our musical, Once Upon a Mattress. Our students are excited, and those are underway. Also, our students are busy rehearsing for the talent show. It is loud and noisy at night. The students have a great show planned with extremely talented acts. The talent show is an APT fundraiser, so please consider bringing your families out for a night of fun. Our career fair is March 17th, and we are always looking for additional businesses to participate. Career connections is an important part of our work, and this is our third year hosting our career fair. We definitely believe in the importance of exposing our students to potential careers and hope that they use the time in high school to explore their interests while also considering the careers that are connected to their passions. Our Lake Forest High School educational teams have been very busy engaging with families regarding course selection for incoming freshmen. We are grateful for strong relationships between our school and our sender schools. We've improved our articulation and our processes over time, and we realize that the closer we work with our sender schools, the better the experience is for students who are transitioning into the high school. Lastly, summer school registration is open. Summer school is a great time for students to become acclimated with the high school and to also work on some skill development. Please take time to review the catalog, and the catalog is posted on our website. Thank you.
Okay, the next part is, I think, going to be something of a group effort because we have somebody that we really want to celebrate. So Julia, would you come join me up here? So you should come around by the microphone over here and make sure everybody can hear you. So this is Julia Tanna. And Julia swam to an IHSA Girls Swimming and Diving Championship in the Students with Disabilities Class A Hundred Yard Breaststroke. And a couple of things you need to know about Julia is that this is not the first time that she's been a state champ. So this is the second time. We missed you last year, and so we wanted to make sure and catch you this year. And Mr. Burkhalter and Dr. Holland, I think that you guys would probably like to share a couple of words, but I want to let Julia tell us about her experience first. So where was it? What was it like? How did it compare to last year?
Okay, so hi, I'm Julia. This year's IHSA State Meet was at Nutria, I believe. It switches off and I never remember, but I feel really lucky because as someone with a disability, I don't, I never even thought that like swimming would be a thing for me until high school. And I met my coach, Carolyn Grevers, and she has just done so much for me and was very supportive in all the things I've done, and I really couldn't have gotten there without her, so.
And so you have plans for next year?
Yes.
You've got that figured out already?
Yes, I will be going to swim at Bates College in Lewiston, Maine.
And Bates isn't a bad place. I mean, this is way better than Williams or Colby or any of those other places. And how did you pick Bates?
I actually, like, with the College Resource Center, I went to a lot of those rep visits where the representatives come to our school, and I just got a really good feeling about Bates, like, the second I stepped in there. And that was my junior year, and I kept going to rep visits. And when I was able to actually visit Bates's campus, I just fell in love with it just as much as I thought I would.
And so that's really fitting for what we have coming later on tonight. And who is your counselor?
Mrs. Miles.
Mrs. Miles, okay. So, well, Mr. Burkhalter and Dr. Holland, would you care to share a couple of observations about Julia?
Julia, I'm very proud of Julia for many reasons. She's a wonderful athlete, but even more importantly, she's a beautiful person. She walks into a room, and you can see her smile right now. She lights up the room, and every office I go to, they speak so highly of you and how wonderful of a student you are, but how you make everyone's day better. And so I want to, I'm very proud of you for many reasons, but the beautiful person and the beautiful spirit that you have means the world to all of us.
Thank you.
On behalf of the Athletic Department, it's just been so fantastic to have Julia a part of our programming. And she brings this just crazy can-do spirit. I've never had a day where I see Julia in the hall or getting ready to go on the pool deck where she's not just genuinely enthused about her opportunity to swim. Be with her teammates, I think that's just as important to her. She's a fantastic teammate and been an unbelievable ambassador for Lake Forest High School, not only locally, but at the state and national level. She missed the last meeting because she was swimming at a national meet in Texas, and she's looking forward to the opportunity to continue her swimming career at Bates, and we couldn't be more proud of her. So congratulations to her.
Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you very much, Julia, and congratulations. And I didn't realize that we had kids in common, so your sister is one of, my daughter's friends. So you can stay for the rest of the meeting if you want to. It goes downhill sharply from here, okay? So I told Julia that she was the star of the show, which our kids always are. So I'm going to begin the downhill part right now. So Ginny Zenzler from 115 and Alice Levert from 67, I joined them at the National School Board Association Advocacy Conference this past weekend. And they have, NSBA has a number of key issues that they advocate for on the Hill each year, and IDEA, full funding for IDEA is their number one issue for this year. This is a invoice that we give each year when we meet with the senators or congresspeople. This year, we met with the staff from Senator Durbin and Senator Duckworth. They were otherwise busy with other things happening last week that you may have heard about in the Capitol. We did, we were able to meet with Congressman Schneider personally and give this to him. The good news on all of the full funding issues is that all three of our representatives are sponsors of the full funding bill. That is a big deal, particularly because Senator Durbin is the whip. And learned from a friend of mine that when the whip is on board, that's a signal to all the other senators, okay, this thing is going somewhere. So the shortfall in IDEA funding, this is the difference between what the district got and what they should be getting, which is forty percent of our costs for IDEA, is almost $24 million that's over the last, that's just over the last thirteen years. So nearly $3 million in shortfall last year. If you're a Lake Forest resident, you'll add another $31 million onto that, so $55 million. The important thing for residents here is that this is effectively a federal mandate with a local levy. So our property taxes pay this $55 million, to be clear. We're highly reliant upon property taxes, and so what we do is we supplant general ed dollars to move them to pay for that. So it was a very good visit. Thank Ginny for her time in being there. And then I also wanted to move on to a couple of other things that happened, happening in this board meeting and also in the workshops that precede these meetings. So we're currently working on discussing four topics. The annual operating levy, the annual debt levy, which is from the 2006 referendum debt, health and life safety review, and the facility master plan. I wanted to clarify what those are. So what is our operating levy? Operating levy is how in our district we fund our schools overwhelmingly. Eighty-six percent of our funding is from this levy alone, and then another chunk comes from fees, and a small portion comes from the state. The easiest way to think of it is the operating levy, the increase to that is like a cost of living increase. To be clear, District 115 is tax capped. Not all districts in the state are tax capped. Each year, the board can levy up to CPI, not beyond it, or five percent, whichever happens to be less. The increase for a million-dollar home within our district is $42. That represents about three-quarters of a million dollars of new revenue to the district and compounding in a five-year forecast, about 3.8 million. So what is the annual debt levy? The district has a separate levy from the operating levy, that is the voter-approved referendum debt, and the board can levy for that to meet the annual payment for that debt service. Sort of like having a mortgage, the board can levy in order to meet its mortgage payment. That's what that looks like. We're also conducting a ten-year health and life safety review. Every ten years, we're required to do this, and architect must do this, and they look at code changes, all sorts of different aspects of the building. And at the end of that, they detail in a comprehensive report that'll be due sometime in the mid to late summer, all of the issues that they have found. We're midway through this, and it will list A, B, C, and D, which these are factors that you need to do immediately. These are, you have a certain timeline to do those, but they all must be taken care of before the next ten-year review. We're also doing a facility master plan. So one of the choices that the board had to make was if the board wanted to do a life safety review alone, and/or if they wanted to pair that with a comprehensive review of our facilities. Facility master plan is something that we have not had in many years. There's a cost savings associated doing the two at the same time. And the master plan is like a roadmap. Where are we headed? It's a living document. It's not something that is fixed in time. Likewise, we're midstream, and that will have a recommendation to the board in sometime in April and May. So why are we doing this now? The last review of our facilities was in '05. The work that we did in '06 and '07, that's the referendum debt that I mentioned earlier, really changed many parts of our building. It completely updated our band orchestra choir and a number of our classrooms. What the kids sometimes call the Apple Store, that atrium, that is either the most loved or hated part of the building, often depending on your age. The kids love it, and people over a certain age tend to hate it. That was brand-new. Prior to that, the kids were all in the hallways. The hangout area for them was not in the commons, it was throughout the building, in the halls. We have the best drive up in the state, but we have a lot of work to do for the rest of our building to bring it up to speed. So I want to clarify what the administrative recommendations are on these things. And administrative recommendations, boards can do three things. They can accept them, they can reject them, or they can modify them, and you'll be hearing about some of that later on. So working backwards, there was a recommendation to do the health and life safety. We need to do this. There's also a recommendation to pair it with a facility master plan. So those two things are working together. We know that our health and life safety review is going to require at least a million dollars in improvements. We also know that we're going to have at least $10 million of updates in just our heating and cooling in one part of our building alone. We also have a number of other capital expenditures. Our current fund balance is roughly that same amount of those two things pooled together. The life safety isn't complete yet, as I mentioned, neither is the facility master plan. We do anticipate a significant amount of improvements over the coming years and capital expenditures for a wide variety of things. It is important to note that these improvements are not instructional improvements. That's a separate thing. That's what the facility master plan looks at, is where do we go, both in terms of what you need, in terms of keeping the lights on, but also how do we improve instruction in the building? And that's one of the recommendations that will come out of that. So we're going to be talking about a levy here shortly. If we don't levy, take the levy and the annual debt service, the board will have several options. One of those options is to issue what is known as operating debt, but you have to pay that back with instructional or operational dollars. We have done that in the past. We're doing, we're doing that currently for the track. That's how we funded the new track back in '13 and '14. You can seek a referendum to compensate for the money, not taking in the levy also, or you can find some way to cut programs or people. That's always an option for any sort of funding. So the administration is going to be recommending taking the levy as well as the debt levy. There are frequent conversations around, hey, does the board always take? Is the board a rubber stamp for administration recommendations? I can assure you in both districts that I work in that that is not the case, and you're going to hear, if you were in the workshop earlier, you heard a fair amount of back-and-forth in there, and you'll hear about that here. There is a great deal of processing, but where the discussions begin for a board is for the administration to make a recommendation and the board to ask questions, a lot of questions, and ask for more information, and so on and so on. And that's how the deliberative process works. So that concludes the superintendent's report for today. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. We also have, well, actually, sorry. Are there any members of the public who would like to address the board? If so, would you please go up to the podium? You can go first, since Casey, she raised her hand first, so you were close. We ask that, we try to keep the comments brief, and we will listen actively, and if there's follow-up required afterward, we like to do that via email, and we will do that.
Do you need name and stuff like that?
I'm sorry, I thought I said state your name and then go ahead and talk about the topic you'd like to cover.
My name is Lisa Burton-Radzaly, and I'd like to understand better, or ask the board to consider, why we're considering passing a levy and how we can determine what amount is needed until we have a better understanding of exactly what expenses we need to incur. So why do this now as opposed to waiting another few months and having a better sense of what's going on? I'd also like a better understanding and hope the board will consider additional revenue streams besides taxpayers to fund these expenses. What are you considering using from reserves? What are you considering in terms of grants as realistic possibilities? Is there a capital campaign possibility to turn to the school families and to our community to uplift our building? And those are just mentioning a few, but why not consider other revenue sources before requiring taxpayers to pay it? Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Casey Murray, and I'm a senior at Lake Forest High School, as some of you may know. I just want to take what, actually, first I want to say that Dr. Holland's about the whole talent show thing is, we also have TEDx, which is on March 12th, and you should all come there. We're not really a fundraiser, but we have a lot of smart and passionate students who are going to be speaking there. And on behalf of the whole TED Ed Club, I just want to say that if anyone could, if everyone could come to that, that would be just very appreciated. And then I just also want to kind of take the dominoes and kind of spill them over a bit more by saying that I think that a lot of my generation feels very upset and discontented with the current state of politics in our country, and we find it like very upsetting that politicians who won't be around to see like the world aflame and all these terrible changes happening and all the changes in our own country with the debts that we're going to have to pay and with the changing geopolitical landscape that we're going to have to deal with, that we just aren't satisfied and we want a seat at the table. But right now, we're shut out of all the policymaking processes courtesy of like the fact that large corporations have so much more financial resources than we do, and we can't vote. And so that's why we turn to protesting and penning scathing opinion pieces that don't do any good for anybody, and that's also why we launch into rants at congressional town halls and school board meetings. And I want to just rise today because I'm an institutionalist, and I want students to have the ability to resolve our problems from inside the system rather than attacking the system from outside and trying to burn it down. And I think that that process can and must start with this board of education. So in the short term, the board can only make decisions that affect about sixteen-hundred minors, most or all of whom can't vote. And what I ask, what we'll become of those students in ten and fifteen years? And the scientists say that children raised in environments that suppress creativity are spat out as dull conformative hulks. When nurtured and encouraged, however, there is no limit to what we can imagine. I rise today because I believe that the same is true of idealism. We are born trusting and optimistic, convinced that we mean something. It is only when we become convinced of our powerlessness to do things, to do good things as we are, many of us are right now, that we leave hope in the system. It is only then that we start protesting and creating a general nuisance. And I want to say that that's not how things need to be, and that's not how things should be. I want, if you give us meanings to meaningfully affect policy through the normal channels, we will be all too happy to make use of it. We will tell you all firsthand about the dumpster fire that is the recycling system at our school, about what we want to do with the courtyard that's just sitting in the middle of the school building and not being good for anybody, about the many, many, many things that we would prefer to a $100,000 Fazio Le Grand Piano. And if that can be accomplished, we will leave LFHS convinced our ability to change the world for the better. Our education will have given us the insight to know ourselves, and our experience making policy will have given us the courage to make a difference. So with that in mind, I'd like to ask the board to amend Section 2 of its policy manual to allow for the elected representatives of the student body at LFHS to serve on the District 115 School Board ex officio. While I recognize that Section 1010 of the Illinois School Code prohibits the board from granting any student advisors voting rights, and while I acknowledge that I myself am student representative of sorts on the Finance and Operations Committee, I still think that it would be nice if the board undertook this step to ensure that students have formal representation as the people most directly impacted by board decisions.
Okay, Casey, you went over the limit.
Yeah, so I've just written a brief proposal piece of legislation that I just want to share with you guys.
Thank you. Thank you. Are there any other members of the public who'd like to speak before we get into our committee reports? Okay, moving on, extracurriculars. Tim and Ashley.
Hi, I'm Ashley Malik. I'm the Student Activities Director.
And I'm Tim Burkhalter, the Athletic Director.
So today, we wanted to talk about just student engagement and what that looks like at Lake Forest High School. Student engagement is one of our building goals, and as our goals are starting to discuss what inclusion looks like at the school, it also is asking us to reflect on how our students feel a sense of belonging, engagement, and success in all spaces. So what we are keeping track of in one of our building goals is making sure that ninety percent of our student body is involved in something, whether that be in athletic, an extracurricular theater program, or a club or activity. We have a building goal that ninety percent of all students will become engaged, and through the years, we've really been honing what engaged means and what that looks like.
As you can see here, this is just a current State of the Union, and we're really, really pleased that this date and time in February, we're very close to that ninety percent threshold. And that's not an arbitrary number. Over the last three or four years, working closely with the Student Activities Directors, the Athletic Department, Shayla, and the administration, we recognize that there, a hundred percent participation is not realistic. We have kids who participate in outside activities. We have kids who work. We have kids who have many other responsibilities that are meaningful, maybe just not at Lake Forest High School. So we've landed as a key performance initiative of ninety percent participation. You can see here, not surprisingly, that our freshman participation's a little higher than our senior participation percentage-wise, but numerically, we have 353 seniors participating in extracurricular activities. Their class size is a little bit larger. Some things that have happened this year that we're really proud of, sixty-one returning students, sophomore, sophomore seniors who were not engaged last year are engaged in something this year. That's something we track. That's something we look at on a case-by-case basis. We try to reach out to those kids to see where their interests lie. Sometimes they're not even aware of what we offer. Ashley does a phenomenal job of seeking those kids out on a one-on-one basis and making sure they're aware of our opportunities. We added eight new clubs this year, addition of JV Girls Volleyball as a three-year study where we were looking at, can we support another level? Is there sustained interest in that? And is there levels where they can participate? And the answer to all those were yes, yes, and yes. So we added that level this year. We will be adding intramural cornhole, which, for those who aren't familiar with that word, is Bago. And that is wildly popular in our student interest surveys with our kids. We had a group that came to my office last spring and gave me a two-page list of kids that would play if we offered that. That will be an intramural that we offer this spring, new, at Lake Forest High School, and we think it's going to be very well-attended. Another area that we partnered between activities and athletics was a coed badminton tournament this fall with the Interact Club. Kids came to us, kind of wanted to do a fundraiser, they kind of wanted to have a coed tournament. The Interact Club actually fit right into their mission of what they were trying to do, and so it was a great partnership between athletics and activities.
Yeah, so similarly, like Tim said, last year, we had forty-nine students that were newly engaged, and this year, we have sixty-one. So our trends are upwards. And then also, like Tim said, a lot of it is students being aware that they now have a place that, you know, we have eight clubs added. We had four clubs added last year. They now know that they have a platform and they have a voice, and that when kids are saying, this is what we want to do, you know, they're approaching us with real like data too, which kind of makes me smile, is the list of kids who are interested in cornhole or the list of kids who, we just started a wellness club, and it started because these cross-country runners loved this mindfulness that they did every Friday, and they said, we need more of this and less stress in our lives. We want to create a club, which really aligns with our social-emotional learning standards too. So as soon as they set it up and said, here's what we want to do, here's why, here's where we learned about it, and we think that this could really run as- we learned about it, and we think that this could really run as something other kids who are not cross-country runners would be interested in doing," you know, we just gave them the go-ahead and said, like, "Let's see how it goes." And so that's how our pilot club program works, is for a year, students just get to test their ideas. And as long as it doesn't conflict with certain clubs that we already have established, it really is like, then go and see what you come up with and see how it goes and what are your first couple of meetings going to be. But it's kind of like a passion project for them, and it's really fun to see what comes out of it. So. So where are we headed? Like I said, just continually engaging with kids and making sure that they know we're here. We're hoping to get them connected and we're kind of open. And then, one thing Student Activities has done is we're building an IHSA athletic, or eligibility process similar to how athletics pulls eligibility. This is something that we have to do for our competitive clubs, but it's also starting to facilitate good conversations with the sponsors about what it means to be academically eligible. And it's really building in this security net for these kids who otherwise aren't necessarily engaged in the classroom, but they have to be. IHSA says they need to be, and it's telling them basically, there's more people in the building who are really concerned about you and are here for you and want to help you succeed in all ways, not only in activities, but also athletically, or academically. And then similarly, we're starting to review student engagement and its connection with student academic success. We're starting to look at, how does it look when students are engaged and what does that look like in a GPA sense? What does it look like when a student is newly engaged? And does that structure lend anything or any strength to their academic performance? So that is what we're starting to track, just to see if there's any trend lines that we can follow.
A couple of the things that we're, we've started and will continue to do throughout the course of the balance of this year is we've provided all of our current students with an interest survey so that they can kind of give us feedback on the current offerings we have, as well as some open-ended opportunities to let us know where their interests lie. That actually is where the cornhole and coed badminton idea came out of a year ago, and we were able to put that in play this year. And a new thing that we're doing in the Athletic and, is we've created a proactive approach to surveying our student athletes at the completion of their season to give us specific feedback on their experiences. We want to know, you know, what's going well? What areas do we want to focus on that maybe could, could use some more attention? What feedback can they give us specifically about our coaches and their experience? And we kicked that off this fall. We will be administering the second version of that here as the winter sports wind down, and then again in, in May, when spring athletics complete. By the end of the year, we're hoping to have a compilation of data from across the year that will give us some real good direction. It does provide us currently with some great feedback opportunities with our coaches, programming, goal-setting, and where we want to go from there. So we're excited about getting that hands-on feedback from, from the kids and giving them a voice. It's something where we often hear, they don't have a place to give us their opinion. And so, those surveys have been administered in the fall and will be continued to administer as we move forward. Yeah.
So are those surveys, are they done like on paper and turned into the code?
No, those were, that's, it's actually a Google, Google form that was dropped into each and every one of their, like, we took all our fall athletes and dropped it right into their inbox.
Okay.
And we want to continue to encourage them to fill those out.
I have a question also. This, I love seeing the confluence of where you guys are able to analyze the data about the participation, and I love Ashley talking about seeing how that fits not only into social-emotional wellness or learning, but also GPA, as an example. One of the senses that I had before the Administration brought the recommendation to bring ECR to us, which was a way to track a number of things about our students, was that every year, Tim would have to start from scratch and pull a bunch of numbers, and it was sort of a repetitive process. I'm curious whether or not you have seen with ECR the ability to access the data in a way that's useful to you so that it's really, I want to hear. What I really want to hear is that it's paid off. It's been a good investment and that it has enabled us to be sort of able to see in real time without that sort of incredibly repetitive exercise of figuring out who's going where and what they're, what they're engaged in. But if that's not true, you can tell me that.
So this doesn't, the system that we developed for tracking extracurricular activities was developed in-house to feed into ECR's portal. That's the difference. ECR does track all of our academic data, but in terms of student participation, between Tim, Ashley, and Michaeline, who is the former Student Athletic Director, we would all sit down and talk about, and a few other people, what it would take to create a real-time system in-house that gives us the data that we need and we feed that into that portal.
I appreciate, so that's helpful for me to understand. Do you feel like you have the tools to do the tracking that you need?
Yes, I do. And I also think now that we're definitely looking at, to see, we're looking to see if there's a correlation between student participation and academic success, aligning those two structures and working with ECR to figure that out is helpful. They are great think partners, and they also have experienced developing systems. With our internal work with extracurricular activities, it's easier, it was easier for us to build that ourselves than to focus on feeding them a lot of information that we actually have and we collect internally regularly.
Tim, I think before you guys track as well, kids that are doing multiple sports, multiple activities, because one of the things in the state report card, it looks like they're moving towards is two or more.
Yes.
So they're not, so they're kind of staying engaged the whole year. So I assume you're continually.
We are, and that data, you know, the tough part right now is we're finishing winter and sign-ups for spring are active, but rosters for spring are not complete. Once we have that complete roster, then what we do is we cross-reference the multiples, we call them. And last year, that number was about 640, 650 multiple. That's, that's either a two or three sport. What's interesting is we're trying to track that also with how many of our athletes are also involved in clubs and activities. And we have kids that, when we look at our data, have six, seven, eight as their number of things that they're involved in. And some of those participations ebb and flow as they come in and out of their athletics. You know, maybe that's their off-season for their sports, so then they become a little more involved in their club or activity. So, absolutely an important piece of data and one we're pretty proud of that we have. A lot of kids for a school of 1,529 that are participating at such a high level.
Yeah, so for Student Activities, the way our attendance works, it's year-long, but we do have seasonal shifts, and we actually have, since we're able to change our data as we go, we adjust. And when I know winter sports are about to start, I can kind of draw a line in my data and I can see what activities shift based on students who are no longer in volleyball and now they're going to be in debate, or whatever they end up kind of picking up in the off-season. Because even still, I have students that I know that if they're interested in a spring sport, I'm still trying to kind of see, what are you doing? It's fall, it's winter, how are you getting engaged? What are you kind of keeping busy with after school, knowing that badminton hasn't started? And so, and knowing that we can kind of follow seasonally, because it's easy to kind of, it's easy to adjust my data to fit his enrollment lines.
Yeah, I think that's the only I would ask, at the end of the year, that we really can see the kids that are essentially two-plus.
Yeah.
Because again, the one's great, but it's in terms of even what the state's going to start looking at.
Yep.
I think in a couple of years, from what Jordan and I had looked at in terms of their state report card, it looks like they're going more towards a two-plus.
Yep.
For the percent of kids by school comparisons.
Right.
Which is great, so thank you.
That would be very easy to pull for you.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah. Any other questions?
Great, thank you. Okay, Patrick, the post-secondary report, please.
Okay, good evening. Thank you for giving us the opportunity. I want to take a moment to introduce colleagues of mine. This is Laura Stetson, she's a counselor in the department, and Dan Panful, who is also a counselor in their department. Dan won the lottery, his direct supervisor's also a parent on his caseload, so he gets to counsel my son and my daughter. And one of the unique, one of the unique aspects of my experience at Lake Forest, now in my third year, and I've mentioned this before, is the ability to wear my administrator hat during the day, but also wear a parent hat and always be able to see the interactions that ed services in general, but particularly the counselors interact with students, the care they give, and the love they have for the students and the families and the service they provide. And I say that as a parent, knowing my son and daughter have the opportunity to be afforded that every day. And that makes my job really rewarding, knowing that I'm just a part of a team that really, really loves working with kids. So, I wanted to start with that. I also wanted to acknowledge Jackie Berkshire in the, in the audience. She's retired from ed services many years as a counselor as well, was a great foundational person for me my first year, was her last year, and I gleaned as much as I could from it, and I know she's watching this presentation with a critical eye, so I'll, we'll do our best. But I wanted to do a quick presentation of the larger report that you've read, knowing that Dan and Laura could absolutely best answer your questions when I'm finished yapping. So, this report was meant to highlight the work our counselors do with our students and families around post-secondary planning. I'm going to have to keep putting these back on. The goal is, the goal of the college counseling and post-secondary counseling program is to provide students and families with the direction and the information they need, as well as building their self-awareness skills to truly understand what a best fit looks like for them. I'm in counseling seminars regularly, and what I continue to hear our counselors say to the students is, "This is an individual process. Don't listen to the outside influences. Don't be influenced by what your friends are doing. Think about what's best for you and what is best for your family in this process." I think it is highly appropriate that I, we follow the extracurricular report, because that really is what grounds our students in the, in the here and now, the day-to-day, is they're really delving into life at Lake Forest High School in multiple facets, in the classroom and outside the classroom, in competitions and in club activities, raising funds, fundraising, things like that. Our counselors, our programming is designed to encourage that, but not for the sake of listing, greater lists on transcripts and college applications, but rather really, truly to immerse themselves in the here and now to enjoy their citizenship as Lake Forest High School students. We know that the college landscape, admissions landscape, is rapidly changing month to month, year to year. Our counselors maintain strong memberships in local, state, and national professional or affiliations in order to keep themselves abreast of the changing trends. We are often at the beck and call of the State of Illinois or other unfunded mandates, so we try to keep in touch with the news cycle as much as possible to make sure we are providing our students and families the most updated information possible. I've given this presentation the last three years. This data here doesn't change very much. We know a vast majority of our students go to two- and four-year universities, which a vast majority of those attending four-year universities. Again, this year, this past year, 22 graduates chose to go to the College of Lake County, which is a two-year institution, and it's more than any other four-year institution. So we know our students, there are student populations that are taking the local community college route on a, on a one- or two-year timeline in order to enter into a four-year university when they are ready. We know that our students are spread out all over the country, with the Midwest being the highest area of concentration. Location of campus is the number-one influence for our students, and that means multiple things. But in recent years, the southeast has seen a rapid increase in student enrollment, largely due to climate, maybe what's on CBS on Saturdays in the fall with college football, as well as the growing number of scholarship dollars that the SEC and those conferences have identified for students from the Midwest. I mentioned the changing landscape. The, the research, and I'll, you know, cite the Stanford study entitled "To Find Best Fit, Ignore the Rankings," indicated that regardless of the selectivity of a college, the most successful students, both in college and beyond, are the ones who engage the college experience, just the way we're talking about our Lake Forest High School students engaging the high school experience. We know the national rankings provide a, one portrait of the educational experience, but a skewed portrait when it comes to how the numbers are broken down. U.S. News and World Report, national rankings are highly sought after and great attention is paid to them. But we know that if you break it down by percentages, some of those rankings are based on reputational rankings from other college administrators, as well as college financial data that has relatively little to do with reflecting student achievement. We know that while they're, the highly selective colleges get a lot of attention in the news cycle and in our community, most four-year colleges accept well over half their applicants. And we know that colleges now are changing their view of what a strong candidate or applicant is. We know that the early decision process has awarded colleges the opportunity to build their freshman classes earlier by requiring students who are accepted ED to commit to that. That's now changed this year as the Justice Department came out with a ruling that essentially dissolved that and allowed students who were, who were accepted early decision to now be recruited by other colleges with different perks along the way. We know that colleges are going test optional, because they realize that the testing landscape is perpetuating the privilege that has existed for years. And we know that colleges want candidates who share unique experiences, who've overcome struggles, and who have led and served in their young lives. I'll take a moment just to highlight this post-secondary curriculum. We've been building on this curriculum for a very long time. Counselors begin the post-secondary seminars, if you will, really with senior, sophomore year, so students early on are dipping their toe into interests that they have, getting a sense of what possibilities exist beyond Lake Forest High School. We utilize Naviance to provide families the most accurate and updated information they can about factors that, factors that influence college admissions. The, the beauty of the caseloads that we have for our counselors is that they are small enough that one-to-one, small group and one-to-one family meetings are at the core of that two-and-a-half-year process. And I think it's really important to keep in mind that personal touch that is special to every family that goes through the high school. Myriad evening sessions to support the process, provide families with important information. This year alone, we've had the Guide to Financial Aid, Julie Nelson, admissions from Xavier comes in and gives highlights on the financial aid process, key indicators. Harlan Coen presented at Gorton this year about a relatively stress-free college planning, which was lightly attended, but we're looking forward to having him back in the future. He's a college advisor and a New York Times bestselling author. And then this spring, once again for the second year, we'll have our Ask the Expert panel with admissions officers from a variety of schools in the area who will answer parent questions. We've enhanced our communications. Scout Destinations is a quarterly publication that gives parents and families as much timely information as they can. We continue with our test prep. Our post-secondary planning guide is handed out to students and families at the beginning of their junior year. It has A to Z of all college planning, resources and things they need to know. We remain active on Twitter and Facebook, and the scholarship scoop that comes out monthly is another indication of how our College Resource Center provides families the information they need to continue to navigate this process. Our takeaways this year is, can, students continue to pursue two- and four-year colleges after graduation? What was in the report, we look at that, those 10-year averages from the national database. We're still around 75% of our stu, our graduates are graduating high, college in six years. So, that remains consistent. Amidst changing college admissions environment, counselors continue to provide students and families with the information they need to be competitive applicants at the colleges of their choice. We've expanded post-high school programming and the communications that we offer. And again, from our senior surveys and the alumni surveys, they report great satisfaction, not only with the relationship they had with their counselor, but the college programming services that they provided. Again, year after year, we see roughly three and four of our grad, our seniors are reporting that they did not seek private college counseling, which tells us that our couns- which tells us that our counselors are their counselors for the college process, and they report high satisfaction rates. I'll leave it up to, open it up for some questions.
That was a very thorough report. I just wanna commend your staff for the good job they do in the college, in the post-secondary exploration. I have two seniors who are participating in that right now, and we have been set up for a lot of good exploration with a lot of good colleges and universities for my boys, and I wanna thank you guys for that. So, I've seen firsthand the good work your group does, so I'm impressed.
Thank you, Patrick.
I've got, no, you're not done yet. You're not gonna get away from me here. So, this is one of my favorite things all year to read. I think you guys know that, and it's both the content, but also the people that make it so interesting. So, Laura and Dan, can you guys talk about, one of the, one of the aspects is the annual college trips that you take, and where have you gone, and what have you learned along the way, and how, how does that apply to what you do on a daily basis with our kids?
Yeah, that's a great question. I'll try to keep it brief. This is my sixth year, and I think I've managed to fit a trip in, even if short, every year I've been here, which is great. And I have done, I've been to, I went to NACAC in California, maybe my second year. I've driven all over Illinois and Wisconsin, down to Missouri. This year, I'm going to North Carolina, and I've also been to see some schools in Arizona. So, that's just a brief snapshot. Colorado, I've also been to Colorado to see some schools. So, it's very helpful in talking to students about schools. There's no way they can picture themselves on these campuses before seeing them. So, for us to be able to provide some insight and picture students on campus while we're there, I think that's really helpful in, you know, providing suggestions for fit, even just allowing them to explore them online before they, they, you know, take a leap and visit. I think, I think it's, it's a great, it's a great service to our kids for us to be able to get on those campuses. And, go ahead.
Yeah, sure. I agree with Laura 100%. This is my fifth year at the high school, and my first year I went to Ohio and visited some great schools there, and then I went to the Carolinas, and then to Colorado, and then to Florida last year. And then this year, I'll be visiting Alabama and Georgia, so I'm very excited about that, some of the SEC schools down there. We know from our data that campus environment, campus setting is the number-one thing that our students, that, that they find most enjoyable, you know, when, or not most enjoyable, but one of the most important things when they select a college. And so, for us to be able to get on campus and be able to talk candidly about what the campus can offer them is invaluable. And so, I personally love the trip each year. I know Laura does as well, and all of our counselors do. It just gives us that keen insight that we can offer to our families and students. When we have our one-to-one meetings with junior families in the spring, those are coming up within the next couple of months, and those are something that we look forward to every year, because we can share our knowledge, we can share our expertise, and try to recommend great schools for our kids and families.
I could just add real quickly, the, I will speak from, as the administrator who gets the applications and say, I wanna go to these areas, reading where they're trying to go and what they're trying to do in a very short period of time. They log many miles, they pay certain out-of-pocket expenses in order to maximize the time they spend in that geographical reason, region. And so, I greatly admire the fact that they need to go see it firsthand. They put themselves on those campuses, and they walk them like a student, and then they're able to bring that information back in a very personal way. So, I just wanted to add.
I'm as pleased and impressed as I could possibly be with all the work that you guys do. So, if you would think of a story of a student, don't name the student by name, you can call him Joe or Suzie or whatever, and how that's translated into your conversation with that student, and how that, in your experience, had an impact on that student because of these trips. Because you guys go on these trips, and you go on the campus tour, like one after the next, after the next, after the next, right, and spend a bunch of time doing what some parents love and others hate. And so, share a story with us, if you would.
Yeah, I can share one. So, it's actually a current story. It's from this year. The student I'm working with has learning disabilities, academic learning disabilities, and so, we together came up with a list of schools that we felt could support her the most. And I happened to be in Florida last year, and Lynn University is excellent in supporting students with disabilities. And so, we put that strongly on her list. She went and visited it and loved the school, and it's her number-one school right now. She'll more than likely be attending there next year. And when I was there, the representatives from the college made a point to pull me aside to have a great conversation about all that they could offer their students, and it just fit. It just fit for her. Not, it went beyond just what they could offer. You know, she was looking for warmer weather, she was looking for a smaller campus and a nice sense of community. Lynn University is one of the largest international populations in the country, and so, that was something that was interesting to her as well. And so, we feel like it's gonna be a good fit, and we hope that she has a great experience if that's the school that she selects.
And if I'm not mistaken, this is a family who was also struggling to imagine where their daughter could go in college. So, what does college even look like for her, if I am thinking of the same family?
Yeah, you're right, Mike. It was a family that wasn't sure if that was the right path. But as a collective conversation, we wanted to at least offer that opportunity and explore it. And we still don't know 100% if that's the route that this student's gonna take, but at least she has that opportunity. She's been accepted, and at the end of the year, they'll make that decision as a family.
So, I'll take a little different route than Dan with this story. So, something we also look for, and that we're working on learning more about, is financial fit. So, this is becoming more and more important as the price of higher education goes up. And the more we see these schools, we know, you know, we could list the top 20 schools that our kids apply to. They're popular, their friends talk about it, and that's really important to them. So, to try to encourage them to apply to schools they've never heard of can be difficult, or schools that they, in their mind, think are lesser for some reason or another. So, convincing them otherwise or providing enough information for them so they can get excited about a place and at least check it out has been really helpful. So, the student I'm thinking of this year, actually, I encouraged him to go check out Illinois State, which sometimes can get a bad rap. But I visited there last year, and I just loved it. I thought their campus was outstanding. I think they have great programming, and they're doing so many great things to sort of revamp their town. So, this student was able to get down there pretty easily, 'cause it's not so far, and just on a weekend, and loved it. So, just sort of changing his mindset about how he felt about that school. So, now as the financial aid packages are rolling in and they're comparing pricing, this is becoming a real option for him and his family. So, I think the more we can offer these options, especially, we have great students. We produce a great caliber of student, the kids that graduate from our high school, and the colleges know that. So, if kids are willing to take a chance on a school that they maybe haven't heard of, and I know Illinois State's not one of those, but, or a school that they maybe thought lesser of, and just to explore the great opportunities these places provide, I think they can find more affordable options, if that's important, and also some, some really good gems out there. So, that was mine.
Patrick, can you speak to how, you know, obviously, the counselors can only see so many schools, and you've got kids that might have different interests, but can you share just how you share that information across the counselors so that they can kind of share maybe experiences they don't have with kids that they're actually responsible for? So, how do you do that kind of as a department, really, to bring that knowledge to those kids and kind of give exposure to the whole team?
You're saying in terms of colleges that they might not?
Well, your counselors can't visit every school.
Right.
You're going to different geographic areas. How do you basically get someone who might be my counselor, but they've not been to the areas that I might be thinking, or even the disciplines I've been thinking, but other ones have? How do you kind of work as a team to have those meetings to bring that knowledge to those kids that maybe?
Absolutely. So, a central component of those college visits is coming back and presenting. This spring, a lot of our agendas are bringing back the college visit data. We have Google, a Google repository with all the information, with the different attributes. Counselors fill that out so that we all glean the information from those visits. So, to your point, we're our own professional network, if you will. We also, through the regional counseling, everything ends with CAC. So, IA CAC, that CAC, and our local one, those meetings, those monthly or bi, quarterly meetings are opportunities for, for counselors from other schools to share their newer understandings and what they've learned as well. So, I appreciate you highlighting that, because that is a central component of the college visit, coming back and sharing what you've learned with your colleagues.
Also.
So, I think Dan and I handle this similarly. When we have our junior meetings in the spring, and for us being newer to the team, we've only been traveling to visit schools for five and six years, we take our suggestions very seriously. If a family wants suggestions, we take them very seriously. So, I often will ask them, you know, would you like some help, and then ask for some time to do some research. And in that time, go visit with the people. I know Brad Naughton has visited these certain schools. I know Megan Miles has visited these schools. I'll see Dan about his Ohio trip, and share with them what this particular student is interested in, and then get some suggestions from my team as well. So, and then providing those, going back and looking at our Naviance data just to make sure it fits with their academic profile, and then exploring it for myself on the website is also really helpful.
Also, just one last question. Do you utilize your best resource, which I would think would be college freshmen, after they've gone to a school for a year, to get feedback from them? Was it everything they hoped for, or more, or less? And, you know, because hopefully, you know, they have a lot of same interests as the class behind them.
That's a good question. I may have Patrick speak to that. I know that it is hard to keep track of them once they're gone. So, it's, and especially even harder to get information from them.
I find the same thing, except when they need money.
Yeah, thanks for asking it. This is the third year that we've sent out a first-year alum, so the end of their freshman year in college, I send out a survey. It's not a sweeping in terms of gathering data, and our sample size of response is relatively small. I send it out a couple times to them. We've had, on average, about 30 graduates after their first year reply and answer questions. The questions are designed to gain feedback on how well-prepared they were academically, as well as socially, emotionally, how they were able to navigate a new campus, a new social environment, handle that new roommate. Did they seek out services for academics or any social-emotional supports? And then, lastly, what could Lake Forest High School have better prepared them for? So, we have some of that data, and that data informs kind of where we look at what our college programming provides. Harlan Cohen, who is the gentleman, the author who spoke at Gordon in November, specializes in that, kind of giving, helping parents and students navigate the new environment, parents themselves, and then students, you know, his book references, you know, getting, learning how to handle roommates and things like that. So, we are looking at that data and asking. We also had this year, for the first time, an alumni panel the day before Thanksgiving break, so we brought back eight graduates from one, two, or three years out, and we had seniors who were able to come of their own choice. We had good crowds in our student theater, and they just answered questions and gave advice and said, here's what it was like for me my freshman year. And to a person, it was get involved with everything you can get involved with, 'cause that's the network you build that you make relationships, and that makes being on campus and away from home a whole lot easier. So, thank you.
Can I say one thing also?
Absolutely.
So, you know, with our model of counseling, we are with the same students for, from their freshman year to their senior year. So, we actually form really strong bonds with our, with our students. And so, oftentimes, they'll come back and visit us either at Thanksgiving break or over Christmas break, or even at the end of the year of their freshman year and sophomore year and beyond. So, we get that, you know, that great conversation with them about what the experience has been like, things they like, things they don't like, and that's really valuable. It gives us some inside information about the school that maybe we didn't have, and more importantly, we just get to continue that relationship with the, with the student.
Great. Thank you guys very much for all the work you do. It's a really interesting presentation, and I look forward to hearing it every year. So, thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. We're gonna move on to the committee reports. The Education Committee with Dr. Tom Nimikas.
Our next meeting is scheduled for the 19th at 7:30 a.m. at the high school, and feel free to attend again, Mr. Lane.
I enjoyed the last one. I will try in the future. Finance and Ops, Sally Davis.
Finance and Ops' next meeting is Wednesday, February 26th, from 7:30 to 9 a.m. here on West Campus. All are invited to attend.
All right. Thank you. Policy Committee, Ted Mormon.
You'll see there are a number of policies on the agenda for tonight, most from our fairly straightforward, unless Jenny has something else to add, but I think most of them are just legal changes.
Okay. Thanks, Ted. Liaison Reports. I didn't clear with you. Do you have an NSSED mention you wanted to cover?
No, actually, next NSSED meeting is this coming Wednesday, and we haven't met since our last meeting.
Great. Thank you. EdRed, John Noble.
Thanks, Dave. So, I'll try to be brief on some of this real quick, but in regards to the EdRed organization, we've been working on a couple different things through December and January. Been working with the ad hoc committees of finance and mandates. So, these are two areas where trying to make change across state legislation to relieve some of the burden on the districts. And one of the philosophies, if people understand, the tax levy, and that puts a lot of ownership back in the local districts and the local folks who support those schools. And so, the idea around Illinois' structure of property tax was to essentially bring that, those dollars closer to the education decisions for the students and the families that are involved. So, part of our work here with EdRed, or at least my work, has been to try to get some of that focus back through the process with legislation. So, looking at the priorities that Mike and Jennifer have outlined for us, we're trying to really look at those specific areas and see what we could do to try to change some focus within the state. So, I had a chance to meet with Representative Bob Morgan, and Dave joined me to meet with Senator Julie Morrison. And so, we had very good meetings, and basically came, came away that they are very supportive of the idea of looking at mandate change and finance changes that would help us basically waiver in ideas that essentially could remove some mandates, or give us flexibility on our costs and how we might do things. So, out of this, what has happened is that there is initially one new piece of legislation that's hopefully starting with Senator Ram Villalobal, and they're working on basically new educational mandates for submission and review process. So, we're hoping that will actually give us a tool and a mechanism for us as a district to start to communicate our preference on mandates, but also understanding for the state, the actual costs that are associated with those mandates when legislative, legislative body passes those and hands them back to us. So, this will be a good opportunity. The second is on special education legislation that is happening, and this is an idea of where we can actually start to get some review process, as well as getting a little better voice in terms of the mandated teacher trainings. There are a significant number of hours that every single teacher is supposed to comply with every single year, and there's a significant amount of duplication and redundancy in those trainings, and those are professional development dollars we can't get back, we're paying for every year. So, those are some things that we're looking to basically get the legislative to change and put some priorities within that. So, all of that is happening, and that's good, and the cool thing is really that the Representative Morgan and Julie were very supportive about essentially seeing that change, and so it was nice to see with them earlier. So, it's been busy and fun, and so I think we're making some very good progress, and I think the EdRed leadership is doing more than just essentially informing us of legislation, but actually leading some charges on this, which has been really positive. The last point I'll make is simply the task force that everybody's talking about. They have still not come back with any update or report from the state, so we'll, we'll keep watching that, and I'll give some information around that. And actually, truly, the last point was some conversations I had with Barrington, their unit district. One of the things they've been doing for several years is passing basically at least an acknowledgement of legislative priorities. So, one of the things I'm looking to bring forward is simply saying, could we, as a district, along with 67 and 65, put down our legislative priorities, the things that we're trying to hold our legislators accountable for, and the changes we'd like to see, and essentially start to draft that, and basically put that in front of us so that Mike would have something to go out to the other districts and the other superintendents. We would have something that we could stand behind and actually say, these are the things that would matter to us here, and we think- us here, and we think they would matter to the state. So this is, again, in the beginnings of the process, so I think we're making good work, and good headway, and optimistic about where we may take this. But that's it. So, there you go.
That's great, John. It's, you know, we're going to, we've been talking about a lot of different things, and I think all of us have heard that the truest, truest and best sense of being engaged in a political, in a political environment, political process is done locally and with school boards. And we're going to talk tonight about the levy and some of the choices we've made on the levy, but I just want to make sure that we understand the conversations that John's attempting to have with our legislators is going to yield very real savings and very real improvements in the quality of the education that we are part of here at Lake Forest High School. And I also want to make sure we all understand that in Mike Semick, we have somebody who completely understands the legislative process, and in tandem with a supportive board and an engaged board, he can help us achieve more good things for our community that are going to net better outcomes for the students, as well as tighter fiduciary controls, where we're actually spending money on the areas that matter to this community. So I'm really excited about that. We're going to talk about several things tonight, but one of the recurring themes that we heard earlier in the board workshop, that I wanted to reiterate as John was talking about that, we understand from the community that there is a desire and a need for better, more transparent, more frequent communication. All of us here, probably Jenny's taking on the biggest leadership role in this, we understand it. We want to be as transparent as possible. We want you engaged. Always understand that the nights we have these board meetings, and we're here coming in for the voting aspect of the meeting at 7 o'clock, there's almost always a board workshop preceding these meetings. All members of the community are invited to attend that workshop. We want you to be there. We want you to understand. But I mentioned all this also, if you want to send any of us emails to our board emails, we will respond to those emails. We want to respond. It may not be as quick as you'd like, but we will respond. And I do want to, I'm getting back to John. John has done a phenomenal job of bringing our KPIs to light. He is just a massive helpful resource that for anybody who wants to understand where we're going, or what we value, or what we're measuring, he's super responsive. Please feel free, I'm volunteering you, please feel free to reach out to any of us, but he's got phenomenal insights into the KPIs and whatnot. So, John, thanks for what you're doing in EdRed, and obviously, we'll have some other things to talk about as a board real soon.
If I could add just one thing real quick.
Yeah.
For Policy Committee, I'm sorry, I slighted Dewey. I meant to ask for if you had any inputs, too.
No, I think Shayla will, there are a couple policies that were developed through the high school, and a recognition that there are students seeking education outside of our four walls, and I think Shayla came to a very thoughtful, is recommending a very thoughtful change there that we'll hear later, but there are a number of policies that we're going to talk about tonight that we've hit a couple times. And I think those, Shayla, the work that you've done is the most interesting of all there. The rest are just simply legal changes, but thank you for your work, Shayla.
Excellent.
All right, great. I'm going to move into our action items, so bear with me. We did actually have some adjustments through the workshop that some of you saw. Again, thank you for attending that. So I'm going to read through our first motion. I want to remind my fellow board members and myself that the practice that we've adopted that seems to make the most sense is that we're going to read the motion, call for a, call for, we're going to, I'm going to read it, call for a motion, have a second, and then before we vote, we'll talk about the motion. And certainly, this first motion will probably, I intend to add a few things, and certainly, if any of you intend to, please do. So the first, what I'd first like to say is, may I have a motion to abate the tax levied to the 2019 year from the previously approved 1.9% to a 1% increase on existing properties for the educational fund of the district?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. With this motion, we'll now talk about it. Who would like to say anything or add any color? I can, if need be, but I'd invite you guys.
Can I just clarify, when you said new properties, Jenna?
Existing.
Just existing. Okay. Not new, okay. I know there's often, no, no, you said just existing, but I know there's often wording, and I just wanted to make sure we, like the drop comma, the cost of the dairy farm in Maine, $5 million, I just want to make sure that we are, we are not dropping a comma.
Okay. I'll attempt to summarize where we're at on this, and what I feel should be good news to the community. So Mike got up and he shared a PowerPoint that I think pretty clearly summarized where we're at. As a board, I want to state this upfront and unequivocally, we are very happy with the progress that our staff and the administrators are making, the teachers are making, and the students are making at the high school. We are very much invested in the mission, visions, and milestones that Mike and prior boards set forth several years ago. I think when we start talking about levies and what we're going to do with the levies, it's important to separate the funding mechanisms from how we choose to do the activities and what we feel is really important, from doing those activities and what's really important. So far, with very little exception, when the, when Mike and his team have presented a meaningful case of a direction that's good for us, we've supported it, and I think that we're recognizing the good benefits of that. What we're talking about with this motion is the inflation-adjusted increase. I think the wording, as we stated, is right. We took a 1.9% inflation adjuster, which is what we were allowed to do. With Mike and his team still supported that, and they supported us sticking to that, because there are some very real spending thresholds about to come up on the horizon. We invested in a master facilities plan, because we need to plan our spending cohesively and far out, and looking around the corners at things that are part of an important building process. That is in the middle of being completed. That master facilities plan is geared towards making us spend more intelligently on the things we must do, including the safety, which is a standard 10-year process that we have to invest in. In that process, we did find very real things, like HVAC, air conditioning, and heating units, and all that kind of stuff that are expensive, okay? That is happening right now. That's not finished. The levy and the adjustment, we might choose on taking what could have been the maximum amount in the inflation adjustment-based levy that we could have taken, we couldn't wait until the master facilities plan came out. We had to make the best decision we could on that. We are voting tonight, and I think we will vote in favor of a 1% versus the previously passed 1.9% adjustment, not because we think this is going to do a tremendous service to every single citizen immediately, likewise, not because we think this is going to seriously hinder the school's ability to do what they need to do for the students and whatnot. We're doing it because we think this is the responsible financial move we can make today to show to the community and all of our stakeholders that we do take this process very seriously. We spent months on this. We looked at all angles. We listened to our constituencies. We talked to the administration. We weighed things out. We talked to each other, and at the end of the day, we felt like it was important to say, we do take your money and the community's money, and the taxation, and everything that goes into the budgetary decisions we make very seriously. We could make the move we're making tonight. We're making a small move in isolation. It's not going to change the world. It's not meant to change the world. We're not doing this to try to make any kind of statement outwardly. We're doing it because we want everybody to know that we take this kind of stuff seriously, and we think there's very real trade-offs that can happen in a budget-making process. Perhaps if other governing boards decide to take the small steps they can make in making smart taxation decisions, we'll find ourselves in a better situation as a community at large. But that's up to those other boards. For this board, we are going to proceed with this vote. I suspect where the vote will be going in, but I do also want to let everybody know, including the people watching on TV, we're in the midst of a master facilities plan that will have very real safety and basic maintenance stuff included in it. We are going to be having our first open house on that plan March 4th, okay? I think it's really, really important that we get the community attending that presentation, because I do suspect it will be likely, after a lot of vetting and more meetings than the March 4th meeting, that I and my fellow board members are going to come before the community and say, we need this amount of money in a referendum for you to consider passing. Now, some of you may say, my gosh, why would you consider passing a referendum asking for funding at the same time when you're turning down some of the maximum inflation-adjusted levy you could make? It's because of this. We've heard a request for transparency. We've heard a request for community engagement. We believe the community needs to be involved in these kind of decisions. We believe the community will be supportive of a smart, intelligent, financially astute master facilities plan. The community should take part in shaping that plan. So when they come for a vote, when we're able to come for a vote and have the community attend, it should be the plan the community wrote, not that a board decided to take with tax dollars. They didn't have a choice in deciding how it went there. So it was a very conscious decision on our part. So that's pretty much what I have to say. I just want to close it in this. The community has asked for transparency. The community has asked for communication. The community has asked to be heard. We've done all that. Your part as a community is come into this process. Please engage in the collegial, good, respectful manner that I've seen, which is great, in how we shape this master facilities plan, because we need to make sure that our school and our kids and everything great for this community continues to be great, and it will be so if you stay as engaged as you've suggested you want to be. So that's the longest possible motion explanation ever.
That's great.
With that, I'm going to see if there's any other comments.
I just want to make a small clarification regarding March 4th. That, the intent of that community open house is for community members to see what the facilities oversight committee has been discussing, and to share your thoughts on that, whether you support what we've come up with so far, whether you'd like to see changes to what we've come up with so far, or whether you'd like us to kind of nick some of the things we've come up with so far. It is not intended to be a conversation about what this will cost, because until we know what the community is really looking for, and until we know what the community would be supportive of, we have not started the bidding process on anything. So please come on March 4th, but please understand, we will not be in a position to answer questions on what it will cost yet, because we just aren't to that stage of the game yet.
Great clarification. There will be more meetings after the March 4th for more of that type of information to manifest itself, because this process is probably going to take until May or June to polish.
And Dave, one other piece. As part of when we decide with the community what the direction strategically will go forward, it's also, we heard earlier with some of the community engagement, people asking about potentials for alternative mechanisms of funding, and that will all be part of that plan and entertainment of ranging from solely a referendum to not a referendum and just soliciting donations, I mean, whatever it takes, but you can't even get to that last piece of the puzzle until you understand what the picture looks like, put some values to it, and then understand where we're at. So I don't, I do think it's important that the community understands, we want you engaged early, but don't come expecting absolutes yet, because we're not there yet. And we will get there, and there will become a point in time in which the tougher decisions about what things actually cost and what that looks like in the future.
Great. Thanks.
Okay, I'm sorry. Just, Jen, this is more for you. Just to clarify, since we are looking at doing a 1% tax levy versus 1.9, actually, according to the county, it, I think it's misstated here, that we're taking the difference out from the education fund. The way the county has it, we have six buckets, and we have to apportion it between the six buckets, so I would assume we do it equally among the six buckets for the 0.9%.
I mean, it's actually on the recommendation of Chapman and Cutler. They're actually bond counsel and tax counsel. So what they recommend is you actually need to state that the resolution is from them directly, and as well as the actual, you know, the structure of the motion. We can certainly check with them to see if we have the ability, but I think in your resolution, you have to state specifically where you're abating it from, which is why I said the educational funds are, is the fund that has the largest portion of the levy.
Right. Okay. And like I said, it, we could either do, for sake of simplicity, it would either be education fund, or I would say equally proportionate between, share-wise, from the six different buckets.
I think that, so, as you guys can tell, there was some discussion, and we did create the third option that Mike referenced. We created an alternative to what was being recommended by the administration, but the legalese and the way to proceed forward, to me, Ted, and we could talk about it and change it. I would go with what Jen's suggesting, and if we, if we find, because by the way, this is, you know, this is real, so she's going to have to go and vet this, and we're going to have to vet it, and if there's a reason for clarification, or there's a reason that there's some minor modification of the way this was just read out, we will bring that up. But I would suggest we stay that.
Okay. And actually, as Jen described before, you're able to make transfers between the funds anyway, so take it all out of the big one, and then you can move money around, you know, like the shell game that we play.
Okay. Thanks. Any other comments or need for clarification? Okay, with that, may I have a roll call vote, please?
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Dr. Nemicus?
Aye.
Ms. Sinzer?
Aye.
Mr. Mormon?
Aye.
Mr. Noble?
Aye.
Mr. Lane?
Aye.
Mr. Weinbrenner?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you. So, another conversation we had in the workshop, so I'll read the motion. May I have a motion to table the resolution transferring funds from the educational fund of the district to the bond and interest fund of the district in abating the tax heretofore levied to pay debt service on general obligation refunding school bonds, Series 2016 of the district.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, for clarification, another option we were looking at was to pay down some of our bond debt, and because we have taken the action we took on the inflation adjuster on the levy, we're not going to pursue this. The reality is that we are well aware of the fact, by reducing the amount of the levy increase we're taking, we are agreeing for years to come to actually take less, collect less in revenue from the community by way of taxes. Therefore, we do not have, and should not also, enter into a decision to try to change our debt. The reality is, we have a tract of debt, and we've chosen the levy path for the, for now. And so we are going to, we're going to vote on tabling this. Okay, may I have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Noble?
So, yea to table?
It's aye.
Table.
Aye. Yeah, motion to table. So, aye, yeah.
Sir, aye?
Please.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Weinbrenner?
Aye.
Mr. Mormon?
Aye.
Dr. Nemicus?
Aye.
Mr. Lane?
Aye.
Ms. Sinzer?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the Core Communication LLC consultant contract for speech and language pathology?
So moved. Second.
Okay. Would anybody, I don't have any questions on this. Anybody want to elaborate? Okay. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Mormon?
Aye.
Mr. Lane?
Aye.
Mr. Noble?
Aye.
Sinzer?
Aye.
Mr. Weinbrenner?
Aye.
Dr. Nemicus?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Now, the next motion I do not want to read, but, you know, we've had, we've had the benefit of a phenomenal communications director in Ann Whipple, and, or communications consultant, sorry, and Ann Whipple, and she's had decades of service to the community and to the school board. She has had high integrity, candor, intelligence. Her ability to help with the written word has been phenomenal, and really, at the end of the day, her honor and integrity have been phenomenal. She's balanced a lot of competing interests in a very phenomenal way, and as such, it's not a good day, but it's a happy day for her, not the greatest day in the world for us, but she will be, she, at any rate, may I have a motion to accept the Director of Communications, may I have a motion to accept the Director of Communications' consultant resignation?
So moved, but with a heavy heart.
Okay. Heavy hearts. Good job. Thank you. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Mormon?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Dr. Nemicus?
Aye.
Mr. Lane?
Aye.
Ms. Sinzer?
Aye.
Mr. Weinbrenner?
Aye.
Mr. Noble?
Aye.
Motion carries.
So to be clear on this, this is not Ann's final send-off, so we're not done with you yet, and we will- you yet, and we will have our proper moment to celebrate all of your contributions at a later time, so we'll get our swings in yet here, so.
Awesome, yeah, what is the effective date of?
April 15th, 2035.
Yes, yes, we got that, okay. All right, thank you. May I have a motion to approve the first reading of Policy 6, 310, high school credit for non-district experiences, core substitutions, reentering students?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any comments?
I would just say, as part of the education committee, this has been a very thoughtful, very long process for Shayla and her team, as well as administration, and they really have done a phenomenal job at trying to align policies in a singular space, remove some of the loopholes, so to speak, or some of the gaps that existed because they were spread across different pieces of our school code and things, and it's really, it's really a testament to her abilities to pull together her team and get a great product.
Great, thank you. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Lane?
Aye.
Dr. Nemecus?
Aye.
Mr. Noble?
Aye.
Ms. Sinzer?
Aye.
Mr. Mormon?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Weinbrenner?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the first reading of Policy 5230, maintaining student discipline?
So moved. Second.
Any comment? Okay, may I have a roll call vote, please?
Dr. Nemecus?
Aye.
Mr. Weinbrenner?
Aye.
Mr. Mormon?
Aye.
Mr. Noble?
Aye.
Ms. Sinzer?
Aye.
Mr. Lane?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the first reading of Policy 5330, sick days, vacation, holidays, and leaves?
So moved.
Second.
Any comment? Okay, may I have a roll call vote, please?
Ms. Sinzer?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Weinbrenner?
Aye.
Dr. Nemecus?
Aye.
Mr. Lane?
Aye.
Mr. Noble?
Aye.
Mr. Mormon?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the second reading of Press Issue 102?
So moved.
Okay, anybody want to comment? May I have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Mormon?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Lane?
Aye.
Ms. Sinzer?
Aye.
Mr. Weinbrenner?
Aye.
Dr. Nemecus?
Aye.
Mr. Noble?
Aye.
Ms. Sinzer?
Aye.
Mr. Mormon?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Weinbrenner?
Aye.
Dr. Nemecus?
Aye.
Mr. Lane?
Aye.
Ms. Sinzer?
Aye.
Mr. Noble?
Aye.
Ms. Sinzer?
Aye.
Mr. Ryanbrenner?
Aye.
Dr. Nemecus?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the Raymond Moore Auditorium lighting partial replacement in the amount of $69,161.75.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we probably should comment on this. Does anybody want to elaborate? Mike, perhaps?
Sure, yeah, we have a critical need in the auditorium. We've had ongoing difficulties with proper lighting. We've got a couple major events coming up, one, the talent show, the other is the musical, so there's some parts that are shared back and forth, so this is an emergency and stopgap measure. We're going to be able to use the parts that we're purchasing here in a retrofit of the proper and complete replacement later on, but we've got to get this up to speed right now, so this was placed on the agenda. It was a late-breaking thing when the lighting failed entirely, so we're also struggling to get our sound system to work, so we've got some pretty significant work ahead of us in the RMA.
Okay, and just as a point of clarification, this amount is the, kind of the critical amount we have to get just done now. We did have in the five-year plan that existed before the master facilities plan, at least $400,000 in the budget next year to actually address some of this. I will tell you, as we're discovering, there's actually more things needed to be done to get the sound and lighting up to par on both theater fronts, and that's just part of what we're discovering through a lot of the process we're going into now, but this truly is an urgent and a small part of what we'll need to do later. All right, may I have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Weinbrenner?
Aye.
Mr. Lane?
Aye.
Mr. Noble?
Aye.
Dr. Nemecus?
Aye.
Mr. Mormon?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Ms. Sinzer?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the Human Resources Report as presented?
So moved.
Second.
May I have a roll call vote, please?
Ms. Sinzer?
Aye.
Mr. Lane?
Aye.
Dr. Nemecus?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Mormon?
Aye.
Mr. Weinbrenner?
Aye.
Mr. Noble?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Great. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda items, including approval of disbursements, payrolls, and financial statements for November and December 2019, minutes of a regular meeting and workshop December 9, 2019, minutes of an executive session December 9, 2019, minutes of a special board meeting January 23, 2020, minutes of an executive session January 23, 2020, minutes of a special board meeting January 27, 2020.
So moved.
Second.
May I have a roll call vote, please?
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Lane?
Aye.
Ms. Sinzer?
Aye.
Mr. Weinbrenner?
Aye.
Mr. Noble?
Aye.
Mr. Mormon?
Aye.
Dr. Nemecus?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. FOIA requests, we had one from Patch, which is complete. Announcements, February 14 is Tri-District Institute Day, no students attendance. Monday, February 17 is President's Day, there will be no school. Thursday, March 2, 2020, no school. It remains an emergency day for makeup if needed, and Monday, March 9, 2020, will be our next board meeting. I do want to add a reminder that we do intend to have that open house to discuss the introduction of ideas on the master facilities plan on March 4. Please.
There are no lectures here.
Yeah, okay. With that, may I have a motion to adjourn the Lake Forest Community High School Board meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All right, may I have a voice vote, please?
Aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.